The lady, the lady said we can go yet? All right, we're gonna start. She must be asleep. Soon as I saw it, right?
In the middle.
Okay, since we've been going back to the COVID days, we've been still broadcasting so people can come in over online to see the meeting. But we always wait for the computer to tell us, okay, everybody's on. But we're not hearing it tonight, so we're gonna start. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the village council meeting for Royal Palm Beach. It's Thursday, February fifteenth, about 6:32 PM. We're gonna start the meeting at this time. Could everyone stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present this evening.
Here I am.
And we're gonna start out this evening. We have a couple of very special proclamations that we'd like to proclaim. The first one is, whereas the state of Florida officially recognizes March as Bicycle Month, and whereas residents and visitors to the Village of Royal Palm Beach enjoy safe, environmentally friendly, alternative methods of transportation that provide access to public and private facilities, such as parks, schools, Palm Tran, bus stops, and businesses; and whereas the Village of Royal Palm Beach encourages the safe use of bicycles as non-motorized transportation; and whereas the Village of Royal Palm Beach is committed to improving the accessibility, connectivity, and safety of non-motorized transportation throughout the village by constructing and maintaining 60.2 miles of paved, shared-use pathways; whereas the local recognition of Bicycle Month in the Village of Royal Palm Beach will increase awareness of alternative transportation options throughout the village while promoting the health benefits of bicycling along with reducing traffic congestion, ultimately popularize bicycling as a viable, attractive, alternative mode of transportation. And now therefore, I, as Mayor of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, proclaim March 20, proclaim March 2024 as Royal Palm Beach Bicycle Month and encourage all residents and visitors to safely explore the convenience and benefits of bicycling as an alternative to motorized transportation throughout the village. Signed and sealed this fifteenth day of February 2024. I just wanna emphasize the safe, and do it safely. I see, I see more and more, maybe you do too, people out on their bicycles, right? In the streets. And now, this is not kids, this is all ages. So we just wanna tell them, do it safely. Wear shoes or sneakers, for example, not flip flops. Things like that come into the safety factor. I, you know, they should wear helmets too, but do it safely. And with that encouragement, I think we'll continue to see more bicycling. And we will continue to work to provide as many path, more pathways as we can for them to go on. You guys can't hear me? We should've said something. I gotta read the whole thing over now. No, I'm not gonna do that. Is that a little bit better? Okay. So we have another proclamation this evening as well. And this is, whereas the Village of Royal Palm Beach's Finance Department contributes significantly to the efficient functioning of our local government and the well-being of our community; and whereas their dedication, expertise, and leadership ensure the responsible management of public funds, transparency, and fiscal accountability. And whereas founded in 1937, the Florida Government Finance Officers Association serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, and city governments, colleges, universities, special districts, and private firms. And whereas the association is the top professional resource of government finance, providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, as well as distributing critical information. It is, to its members and in its members adhere to a code of ethics and standards of conduct and fulfillment of their professional responsibilities. Whereas this Government Financial Professional Week, sponsored by the Florida Government Finance Officers Association and all of its governmental organization members, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals, the vital services that they provide to our state and community. And whereas the Village of Royal Palm Beach acknowledges the hard work, dedication, and leadership of our finance staff, extends appreciation to all government financial professionals in the state of Florida. Now therefore, as Mayor of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, I do proclaim the week of March 18th, 2024 as Government Finance Professionals Week. In the Village of Royal Palm Beach, in the Village of Royal Palm Beach, and I encourage all citizens to extend the appreciation, recognition of government finance professionals and vital services they provide to our community. Signed and sealed this fifteenth day of February 24th. Where's, where's our Finance Director? Sharon, you wanna come out and take a bow?
Might as well.
Say anything you'd like to add?
No, we, we do appreciate you, the council, taking this proclamation to recognize my staff as well as all the finance departments within the state of Florida. We work hard to make sure that we can physically have the financials for the Village of Royal Palm. And I will be doing some fun activities for my staff that week. I know this is kinda early, it's in February, but the next council meeting is like right in between that week. So we just kinda wanted to get this out now, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. And we, and we are honored that we had the opportunity to recognize the excellence of our finance operations. One of the comments I often hear from citizens and other, even all the elected officials, is that they look upon Royal Palm Beach as one of the best-run cities in Palm Beach County. And that's because of our financial acuity that we use in terms of managing our finances. And continue to good work. We thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, comments from members on council? No? Okay. If you wanted to chime in, just wanted to give you an opportunity. That's okay. All right. All right, now we will have reports. I'm gonna start out on reports, basically actually a request to the members of council. I think it's February 24th, is that right? On February 24th, there's gonna be a special event to recognize the outstanding work that the Town Crier has done. I think it's what, 45 years? Is it somewhere?
It's almost 45.
A lot of years, forty, about, almost 45 years. Forty-three years? Thirty-three years? Thirty years.
Forty, forty-three.
A long time. Let's leave it at that.
Forty-five, rounding up. Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt you though?
What?
If, so I'm a...
I was gonna say to you, do you wanna step down?
I am an officer of the board.
I know, you're a member of the board. If you wanna step down...
And I would like to recuse myself.
Please, please recuse yourself and step down and so you can sit next to that fellow right there.
I'd be delighted. Thanks.
All right, that's the protocol, cuz he is a member of the board. The organization that is sponsoring, putting on this special recognition event for the Town Crier is the Palm Beach County, Palm Beach County, Royal Palm Beach Rotary Club, which Jeff is a member in, on the board, so he's taking the right action by stepping aside for this activity. What I wanted to say though is, I think that the Town Crier has been a key thread to helping our village be what it is today. But more importantly, providing a source of information to our citizens, which our citizens have become dependent upon over the years. But it's not just the Town Crier, they also, a few years ago, introduced something called the Royal Palm Beach Magazine. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to see it, but it's a tremendous piece of work that they do. I think they put it out every two months with very special focused stories on the Village of Royal Palm Beach. And we're very proud of the fact that they had decided that it was important enough to create a Royal Palm Beach Magazine. For many years, there was something called the Wellington Magazine that existed. So now we have our own Royal Palm Beach Magazine. But we owe that to the dedication and professionalism of the staff and the head of the, of the, of the organization, Barry Manning, here, there at the Town Crier. So for this event, it's a special event, I'd like to ask, cuz we didn't have this budgeted earlier in the year when we did our budget, to have the council agree that we should purchase a table representing the Village of Royal Palm Beach and honoring the outstanding work of the Town Crier, Barry Manning. So I'll open up for questions or comments.
You wanna go first?
Yeah, great. Cause I promise.
So going off, it's, just for clarification, it is a fundraiser for the Royal Palm Beach Rotary. It is, and they're honoring the Town Crier. So it is not money going towards, or it's, we can all thank the Town Crier in our own ways. Unless we are going to purchase a table at all Royal Palm Beach nonprofit events, I don't think that that is a precedence that we should set with this. I personally buy my ticket to attend the event when I'm able to. I personally donate to the Royal Palm Beach Rotary Club as well as other organizations. So I don't think it is a good use of our funds to do that, for one, if we're not going to do that for others.
I just wanna make one thing clear. Us, this is a special event, and this is a special kinda once-in-a-lifetime recognition. This has nothing to do with other nonprofits that are doing things in the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
Actually, this is the Rotary's fifth annual event that they're doing this way. And every year, they nominate and they honor and...
That's what the Rotary does. We haven't bought tables before?
Correct. But we've attended individually. Every year, you do an opening.
I failed to mention, I am on the agenda, I'm one of the speakers at this event as well.
Correct, correct.
The last one, well, there have been past years when they recognized special...
This is the fifth one, so...
All right, so...
Yeah.
Where'd you go? Jan?
I, I guess I'm coming up from a more just practical sense. A table is how many seats?
Eight seats, right?
Eight seats.
How much is it? It's not a thousand dollars. I take it.
They can get up to 10 at a table, with a minimum of eight at a table.
I thought we were going for eight, but I don't know. All right, whatever the number would be.
So I'm, I'm guessing that the suggestion would be that that table would then be a ticket for all of us plus one.
Correct. And if all of us don't wanna attend, then we'll figure out some other way of having people at the table.
Unfortunately, I, I...
You're not available.
I'm not available.
Yeah, I was aware of that.
And so that leaves...
So that's probably why, I was thinking we would go with eight seats instead of 10. But...
Yeah.
No, but I, sure, if you're not available, that happens to me all the time.
And so I, I understand the uniqueness of this moment in that here we are honoring the Town Crier. I, we haven't had an opportunity to do that publicly in a different way. So this is a nice way to do that. But I also understand where Selena's coming from. And we have talked about this item in terms of supporting nonprofits, and what do we do, and where do we draw the line, and where do we set the precedent, so...
Besides again, I don't know why you, you were looking at this as supporting a nonprofit. We are supporting Barry Manning and the Town Crier recognition, okay? This is not a, just a general, let's do something for the Rotary.
Well, then may I make a suggestion then? Why don't we take out an ad in the Town Crier and say, congratulations Barry Manning and the Town Crier for your 43 years of service to the Western communities? Because that actually goes to benefit the Town Crier.
Well, this is, I think the Town Crier might appreciate if we took out a table at a special event for them, to recognize them. But thanks for your thoughts on that. Richard?
I guess I'm leaning towards, I know we've had this discussion, how many budget cycles now, and then it's been...
The eight that I've been there.
It's been focused more on a different thing. And now, as Selena says, here's another different thing. I guess my thought was, now, am I wrong in understanding that the mayor is giving a speech?
Oh yeah, I'm on the program. I'm part of the program.
Okay, so I don't, I can see that a little bit more as a representation thing, but I'm, I'm not wrong in that, as Selena said, this is, basically this is a fundraiser for Rotary. And this will be, and Selena's view, and probably a lot of people's view, this would be a fundraising source for Rotary. And as Selena said over the years, where do you draw the line? But I think it's different that the mayor's talking. If the mayor wasn't talking, I think it might be a little bit easier for me, but...
The mayor's been on the agenda the last four years. So he always welcomes everybody, you're always talking. So it's not anything different than anything else. I mean, if you wanna...
Well, it could be a little different, but I will be making specific comments about my interactions and history with the Town Crier, but...
Well, I guess...
Like you did with Jess Santa Maria when they honored him, like we did with others that the club has done for... Yeah.
Okay, so...
Several years ago.
Yeah, and that was...
Going back.
Four years ago.
And, and I don't think, and the village didn't do one...
No, it was more than four. Cause Matty was still with us.
The, sorry, go ahead, Councilman Valentes.
Well, I'm, I'm not wrong in, I remember going to the one for Jess, but I don't think it was a village table. Did we get a table for the village? I don't think so, if you remember, Ray.
I do not remember if we got a table or not.
Okay.
I don't think we did.
We did, but I can't swear. But in any event, I mean, to me, the, the hook would be, and I agree with Selena, is like, well, regardless of who the person is, in my opinion, unless it's one of us or a Royal Palm Beach person, you know, try to treat everybody equally, and if you can't give to everyone, why give to one? I, I get it. I mean, I've gotten it for a bunch of years.
Okay, so you're expressing the same sentiment as Selena?
The same sentiment with, with the wrinkle that, I mean, but if you've done it every year, cuz I do remember, but I don't think the village paid for it when you were at Jess's and you gave a speech.
We already have that in place whenever I was presenting at an event.
Okay.
All right, so I guess if I said, if I look for a motion to do it, I don't think I'd get a motion right now. Is that what we're saying?
I'd at least make a motion.
Well, if there's a motion, we'll perform.
I'll, I'll make a motion to buy a table of eight for the Rotary, what is it, Annual Man of the Year banquet on February 24th.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask the maker of the motion, just a friendly amendment, that you find that there's a public purpose for the purchase of the table?
Well, yeah, my public purpose is the mayor's presentation, but I don't, that, that's my public purpose, and I could see disagreeing with it, but that's my...
Either Selena or Jan have the second? I can't second right.
No, you need a second.
I need a second.
Yes.
Is there a second? No, going once, going twice? All right, the motion fails for lack of a second.
I would just like to say though, it's an amazing tribute to them. It's an amazing organization, and if we feel that strongly about it, we should all give personally.
No, that's, okay, thanks. Come on up, Jen. Okay. Moving round and along, we're gonna start reports. Selena, why don't you go first?
So we had our annual daddy-daughter dance last week. We had 115 people in attendance, which is versus the 75 that we had the year before. So it's great to see that really growing and watching all the pictures on Facebook. And I know Councilman Valentes has attended with his daughter in the past, so... It's even a tearjerker a little bit sometimes. Did you go this year? Oh, I have to look for the, the pictures and stuff, cuz I know when you take Nadia, yeah. Oh. We had a senior Valentine's Day party yesterday at the Rec Center, so we had 120 seniors that attended that. Our Young at Heart actually has 275 members now, so that's maxed out for the facility. We have West Fest coming up, that's tomorrow through Sunday over at Commons Park. We have Bob Marcella opening day, I'm sorry, for baseball, softball over at Bob Marcella Park tomorrow evening as well. All of our primary sports spring season are underway. So our soccer, travel basketball, tackle football are all full, up and running. And registration is open for our co-ed middle school volleyball team. There is free VITA tax service over at the Rec Center, and you can get information on that. It is provided by the United Way, and it's for households whose gross income is $75,000 or less. Royal Palm Beach, as the mayor had said in the proclamation, has 60.2 miles of paved pathways for bicycles and pedestrian walkways. So it's really neat just that we're 12 square miles, and yet we have 60 miles of paved parkway, pathways for that. Congratulations to the Royal Palm Beach High School Boys Soccer Team for winning their Performance of the Week from ESPN. And they recently won their second straight district title. So playoffs are still going on, so congratulations to them. And the village, we currently have, the village program has over 700 children registered for their spring soccer program. So that has begun to explode since COVID. And our current projects that we have going on was our lighting over at Farron Park. That's 60% complete, so that'll be finished up in a few weeks. And our Crestwood North Park is moving along, so you can see all the construction out there. The two large pavilions that we have in Commons Park will be opened up for public rental starting March 20th. So those will be completed, and then we can start renting those out. And lastly, with, if you go to palmbeachschools.org, they have a section on there called, now here comes the bus. So you can actually track when the bus is coming, the school bus is coming to pick you up, and you know if it's running late or ahead of time. And you can get that as an app or on your desktop as well. And that completes my report.
I'd just like to reiterate what Selena said in congratulating Royal Palm Beach High's Boys Soccer Team. As she said, they won their first regional game, and I think their game is tomorrow night in Boca. So hopefully Coach Mal will keep them heading in the right direction. He does a phenomenal job with our recreation soccer, and I'm happy we have him teaching the kids soccer and performing at a high level. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Follow that too, because that is good news, it really is. The, the Boys Forest City Soccer Team, actually they defeated John I. Leonard High School. Now, there's a little special thing about that, and that is that the previous principal is now the principal of John I. Leonard High School. So there's a little special kind of a touch to it.
That's right.
But they, they really, they really beat them. It was five to zero, which is, that's pretty remarkable for a soccer game. So, yeah, it's exciting. We'll see what they do tomorrow night. Speaking of education, we had our Education Advisory Board meeting on Monday. And we showcased H.L. Johnson Elementary School, which is always fantastic. And you can always tell when the kids are in to perform for any of these schools because the place is packed. And it was, it was absolutely packed. We actually had the VPK kids, and there were about probably 20 of them in here, right down in front, performing. They did a couple of songs and that type of thing. Absolutely delightful. The parents went wild. It was, it was great. It was fantastic. We also got a chance to hear from the principal, and she, she's doing a great job. And some of the things she pointed out was that it turns out that the only VPK program in one of our elementary schools is at H.L. Johnson. The school also has a STEAM program and Cambridge programs, which are really outstanding. H.L. Johnson, for a number of years, has been a green school of excellence, and they get all kinds of recognition and... And they get all kinds of recognition and awards for that. And their major goals this year include a focus on safety. And they have ambassadors to help with behavioral issues and that type of thing. They are offering robust academic and extracurricular activities. And they use a data-driven approach to inform decisions and commit to excellence and support for customer service and for the kids, of course. You know, it's interesting, too. H.L. Johnson is probably the only school in the county that has a principal and an assistant principal who both went to that school. And it's fantastic to listen to them talk. They each did a little bio background kind of a thing. And of course, they showed them standing out there, first day of kindergarten and that kind of thing. So obviously, their roots are deep. They love the school. What a great opportunity to serve the community through a school like that, that you have such a close connection with. And they even said they loved the village. So it's, it's pretty, it was pretty impressive. Also, as part of the district report for the school, Royal Palm Beach High School has achieved a very significant accomplishment. And that is a graduation rate for last year of 94.5% of the students graduated. And that's an increase of 2.7% over the previous year. So they're doing some really remarkable things in Royal Palm Beach. There are a number of clubs over there that are just outstanding. And one of them actually has to do with the Rotary Club, and it's called the Interact Club. And we were able to actually do a Valentine's Day event. That is, we, the Royal Palm Beach Rotary, with Interact over at Capstone, the senior living facility over here on Okeechobee Boulevard across from the high school on this past Saturday. There were 17 high school students who joined us on that. In fact, initially, we almost outnumbered the residents that we had. But it was a great event. The point that I like to make is that they've got a faculty advisor over there who also happens to be an algebra teacher. His name is Anthony Irverso, and he's doing a great job. But what he's doing a great job with is teaching the kids about community involvement, community service, and leadership. And so there are a lot of really, really good things going on in Royal Palm Beach High School. And that was just a chance to talk about some of those. So I was able to sit in for the mayor this morning at the Transportation Planning Agency meeting downtown. And the board adopted its, the state's and also a federal roadway safety target called Vision Zero. And the goal here is to put together a strategy to eliminate traffic fatalities and severe injuries. And of course, that's a, that's a pretty lofty goal. But just getting close and moving in that right direction, of course, increases the safety, the health, and equitable mobility that we experience here in the county and also in Royal Palm Beach in particular. So it was a matter of adopting it formally, again. Actually, 13 of 39 cities in Palm Beach County have formally adopted a Vision Zero program. One of the reasons is that there seems to be an unfortunate, there is an unfortunate trend right now with regard to fatalities. And that is that, over the last couple of years, they've been increasing in number. And what's interesting, it may be informative as well, is that the serious injuries have been decreasing. And so one of the conclusions is accidents are fatal when they happen. And more so now than they have been in the past. Well, it turns out, we had our PBSO District Nine and District 15 involved in a traffic operation out on Okeechobee Boulevard. And I don't know if there was other locations, but the reason I know it was out on Okeechobee Boulevard is because I got to see it firsthand. Fortunately, I didn't get pulled over. But they were full on out there. They absolutely were. And part of that kind of activity, what that leads to is an awareness, right? Keeps us all very much aware of the speeds we're traveling at because speed seems to be one of the huge problems. It turns out that in a five-hour period of time on Wednesday, happy Valentine's Day, there were 326 traffic stops, 233 citations issued, and a number of other activities that were all about getting people's attention. Slow down, drive safely, don't be distracted. We are really very, very seriously challenged right now as we're seeing the increases in fatalities. It's very unfortunate. This Vision Zero program has some interesting ideas. We've looked at it before. It might be worthwhile for us to take another look at it. Last month, I think the TPA staff was here, I think it was last month, that they were here and they were talking about the long-range transportation plan for 2050. And if you like long-range planning, that's about as long-range as you're going to find. And so they gave us an update at the meeting this morning. And one of the things that was addressed was the fact that most of the municipalities, and in a particular Royal Palm Beach included, had provided some very significant, specific project input for that 25-year program. That program is a basis then for shorter periods of time, five years. That five-year program actually has funding applied to it. So it's a, it's a big deal, and it's really important. That's how the TPA determines where the federal funding goes, where the, where the state funding goes for roads and transportation in the area. So some of the things that were offered up by our village insofar as projects for this 25-year plan was, this, interesting. I chuckle a little bit because it's been around for 40 years. State Road 7 Extension. And then there's enhanced transit. And we've talked about the possibilities of things on Okeechobee Boulevard to improve the choices that people have for driving. And then also, I think a relatively new one, the Coconut Extension, Coconut Avenue Extension, Coconut Road Avenue Extension, that would actually run through to PGA Boulevard through Avenir. There are a lot of opportunities here to make a difference and provide for more efficient and, and less stressful kinds of commuting and travel throughout the county. So, so we've made the contribution, put that information in. I think that's really good. That was, that was a major thing. That long-range transportation plan is supposed to be completed by the end of the year. So I'll be looking for more information on that. And if I could take a moment, a personal privilege, I know I'm talking a long time, but I gotta, I just can't resist this. You know, at the Education Advisory Board meeting, one of the things the schools talked about was art. And we have got some outstanding artists here in, in Royal Palm Beach. And the kids are amazing. I mean, the students are just fantastic. Well, it turns out that we, Carolyn and I, have an artist in our family. She happens to be a sculptor. As a sculptor, she is this week, and I don't know how she's going to do this, exhibiting both at the County Convention Center Friday through Sunday for the Palm Beach County Fine Crafts Show, which is a big deal. And at the Artigra, Art Festival in Palm Beach Gardens on Saturday and Sunday. If you get a chance to stop by, her name is Sharon Bastin. And I've always wanted to use that personal privilege.
She's the best. Said she's the best.
She is, absolutely. Thank you for that unbiased opinion. I appreciate that. That completes my report.
Good evening, no report, Mayor.
No? Okay.
Report, Mayor, thank you.
No report, Mayor, nice to be with you.
Okay. All right, then that closed, that will close reports for this evening. At this time, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, now would be a time to do that. Seeing no petitions, I'm going to close the floor into petitions for the rest of the evening. And now we'll look for statements from the public on non-agenda items or consent agenda items. Diane, any prior requests made?
No, Mayor, I have not received any, nothing.
Right, anyone have their hands?
Mayor.
No? I have not received any comment cards. So I'm closing the floor to non-agenda items and consent agenda items and ask for the consent agenda to be presented.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of January 18th, 2024. Two, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 001 in the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of $95,122 from Parks Division personnel-related costs in Fund 001 to Parks Division other contractual. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into an agreement with Nevis Cleaning Services as the lowest responsive responsible bidder for custodial services, cultural center, events commencing March 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2024. Four, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold West Fest at 11600 Quincy Anna Boulevard, the Royal Palm Beach Commons Park, on Friday, February 16th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, February 17th, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Sunday, February 18th, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Five, approval of a special event permit for Amber's Annual Animal Outreach to hold a Easter adoption fundraiser at the Community Animal Hospital of Royal Palm Beach on Sunday, March 24th, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Six, approval of a special event permit for POTTC events to hold a seafood festival at Royal Palm Beach Commons on Saturday, March 16th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Sunday, March 17th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And number seven, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the third addendum to provisions of services agreement between the Village of Royal Palm Beach and Haverland AG Innovations Incorporated to revise the compensation section of the current agreement, Section 3, to add additional mowing, edging, sand top dressing, verticut, and vacuum services at the Seminole Palms Park Fields and Cat Soccer Complex Fields at the same unit rates as provided in the underlying contract, being piggybacked with such services to be provided through the end of the current term under the second addendum.
Okay. Any questions or comments on items on the consent agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If no opposed, Diane, let the record show that the consent agenda was approved 5-0. And now we'll move on to our regular agenda. Agenda item R1 is a public hearing to consider application number 23-176, an application by Royal Palm Center LLC in adoption, a resolution number 23-53 confirming the council's action. The applicant is requesting special exception approval to allow for recreational facilities, commercial, indoor, within the general commercial zoning district and situated within the Village of Royal Shopping Center for a property located at 1169 A and B Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. This is a quasi-judicial process, so folks will have to be swan in.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant's here. The podium here and give your appearances, and I'll swear everyone in at the same time. Names for the record? Thank you. Your name? Thank you, ma'am. Could you both raise your right hands? And Bradford, I'll swear again at the same time. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll turn back to the council and ask for any ex parte disclosures.
The applicant is requesting a special exception use approval for a recreation facilities, commercial, indoor, within the general commercial zoning district, within the Village Royale Shopping Center for a property located at 1169 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. This slide illustrates the existing site plan and the 5,076 square foot bay we Rock the Spectrum will occupy. Pursuant to the applicant's justification, we Rock the Spectrum provides specialized sensory equipment for children to exercise and develop various skills and abilities. In reviewing the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, and conformance with the village's development standards for the general commercial zoning district. More specifically, whether the proposed special exception is. And I'm going to read through these slides. And there's two other applications on this agenda that these criteria will be for also. So I don't, I'm not going to read them three times, so I'm just going to read them this once. Consistent with the standards of the village's comprehensive plan, complies with all development regulations of the village code, does not have adverse environmental impacts, does not have adverse vehicular or pedestrian impacts, does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, does not have an adverse impact on adjacent properties, is compatible with the character of living conditions of the existing neighborhood, does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, not detrimental to the improvement or development of adjacent properties. And the proposed special exception will not seriously reduce the quality or quantity of light and air available to adjacent properties. And again, reviewing the special exception, staff has determined that the proposed special exception conforms to village standards. The Plains Zoning Commission considered this application and recommended approval by vote of five to zero on January 23rd, 2024. And again, we are recommending approval, Mayor. And I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Does the applicant like to make any comments? No? Are you comfortable with the presentation given by Bradford? Is it on? Okay. I'm sorry, did you want to say something, ma'am?
I just said it's an excellent addition to the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
Oh, okay. Okay, good.
I agree with that.
For comments, Diane, do we have any prior comment cards in the public? No? Ray, anyone have their hands raised?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any public comment cards here. But if anyone here would like to comment, I'll give you that opportunity now. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R1 and take comments from members on council, comments or questions.
Oh, actually, I do. And I don't have anything with the proposal. My question is, are you doing annual membership? Or do you do multiple visit cards?
Yeah, so we kind of do all of the above. We kind of have something that fits everybody's needs. So in terms of just coming into play, we call it open play.
Could you step closer to the mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you guys hear me? Okay. So parents are able to pay as they go. They can just drop in and pay for the day. We also have bulk packages that they can purchase. And then we also have monthly memberships. So it just kind of depends on how often they want to come.
Sure. And then what is the age range that you service?
Probably, I would say, babies to about 10 years old is our typical. But actually, I have another location presently, and we do a middle school social club as well for middle schoolers on the spectrum. So I guess it could be as old as middle school.
Thank you.
So, so this is about autism and special needs?
So yes and no. Our whole kind of mission is inclusion. So while a lot of the equipment that we have in the building is designed to meet kids on the spectrum's sensory needs, we also welcome just everybody. So we want, you know, not just for kids on the spectrum, not just neurotypical kids. We like to include everybody. So, so every child can benefit from it.
And that inclusiveness may be a benefit for every, everybody in every yard, right?
Absolutely, yes.
That sounds really good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's been wonderful.
Jen?
I'm curious about, I love this idea. Thank you for bringing it to the village. As you're taking care of watching and the children, parents are staying. It's not like you can drop and leave.
Well, so we do offer several different programs. The core, kind of right off the beginning, will probably be where parents stay. But currently, I have a different location that I've had for several years. So we do summer camps, and we also have a preschool program. And then we also do parents' night out. So there are opportunities for parents to drop off. But there's also opportunities for them to stay. So it just kind of depends on the program.
How much notice do you need for parents' night out?
What's that?
Drop a gun.
Yes. Everyone needs a date night.
I'm serious.
Oh, I know you are.
We'll, we'll follow up with you on that.
I just wanted to say, this sounds like a wonderful idea. And, and thank you for coming and offering such a thing in the, in the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
Thank you.
I'm sure, I hope you'll be very successful and be here for a long time.
Thank you. We hope so, too.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If no opposed, Diane, let the record show agenda item R1 was approved 5-0. We wish you the best of luck, and you'll be hearing from us.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, agenda item R2 is a public hearing to consider application number 23-181, an application by 99 Lives LLC on behalf of JBL Village Shops LLC, an adoption of resolution number 23-56 confirming council's action. The applicant is requesting special exception use approval to allow for recreational facilities, commercial indoor within the general commercial zoning district and situated within the Village Shops at 441 Shopping Center for a property located at 10113-100 Southern Boulevard. This is a quasi judicial process, so people have to be sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the applicant present for this item? Can you come to the podium and I'll swear you in? Can you state your names for the record?
Rob Eckert.
Avina Eckert.
Thank you. You can raise your right hands. Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Back to council for any ex parte disclosures.
Just a second.
Village staff.
Basically. So let me, I'm going to skip a lot of stuff. I'm just going to tell you kind of what it is that they're looking to do. So according to the applicant's justification statement, the proposed center aims to create a unique and engaging platform for video gamers aged 7 to 17, offering competitive esports training, mentorship, gaming skills development, personal brand building for athletes, and other team-building activities. Again, this is the special exception criteria that I'm going to skip over. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this application at their past meeting by a vote of 5 to 0, and staff is recommending approval, Mayor. And I'll turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
Okay. Does the applicant like to make any comments?
Well, we're really excited to come here to Royal Palm, and thank you so much for meeting us tonight. It's a new experience that we're trying to bring here to Royal Palm and to offer up for the younger kids and something they're very interested in, and hopefully can get them to be a part of the community, come out and join together.
Are you satisfied with the presentation?
Yep, it was pretty good.
Okay, it's pretty good, okay. No, we just want to make sure that you feel like it was properly covered and the information was provided necessary. Okay, great, that's all right. All right, before we go to members on the council, Diane, do we have any prior comment cards from the public?
No, Mayor.
No. Ray, anyone have their hands raised?
No, Mayor.
We have folks out there, right?
Do. We have, there's eight out there.
Okay, good. I have not received any comment cards here tonight, so if anyone that's here would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R2, open up for questions and comments for members on council.
I just, my question is, you know, I've heard about this and I've seen it on TV, but I've never, you know, experienced one or seen one in real life. Is there anything comparable in the area? Because I know, I don't think there's anything like this out here in the area, which would be wonderful for you. But is there something else around in Palm Beach County or neighboring communities that would be the equivalent?
There's the closest, there's a few others that are in Florida. There's two in Miami that are similar. They're not exactly the same. We want to focus on actually mentoring and teaching these kids to be team leaders, where they just kind of rent computers for kids to come and play. And they have competitions there and things like that. We want to kind of gear them more to being leaders in what they want to do and teach them even outside of the game of kind of graphic design and a little bit more of things they can take outside of gaming. But for, in West Palm, there is another small kind of company called XP League, and they do something very similar, where they offer coaching. But they, they're very small, and we don't really know them very well. But that's the only thing I can see that's kind of similar.
Okay, but that's, you know, a good opportunity in not only giving kids who are into this a place to meet with other kids like that, but also giving them, you know, leadership learning and life skills. So that's a...
Exactly right.
Sounds like a positive thing to me. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. So is it strictly gaming versus teaching programming?
Exactly. No, I mean, we're not going to teach kids programming because it's like, programming is a huge undertaking to ask younger kids to do. But we want to introduce them to, say, like Photoshop, Illustrator, InDesign, so they can kind of design their own artwork.
Okay.
But in a gaming scenario. So they'll make their own persona as their gamer character, and they can build from that. So we're kind of trying to show them something that they won't necessarily see. But coding is such a deep and heavy subject that I don't think we're going to focus on coding.
Okay. But it seems very similar, then, to the engineering programs that are in our schools now for STEAM, that it is very similar than if you're just enhancing that aspect of it?
Yeah, there is a lot of that in there. We're just kind of giving them the intro course and where the schools would teach them at the broad course.
Okay. And then is there the same thing, like subscriptions? Or is it monthly, you pay monthly and you can come in? There are hours, do you just do after-school hours and weekends?
We will do, we're going to, we're going to open from 12, from 2 to 10. And we will do coaching, I'm sorry, what was your question? Subscription. We do do subscriptions. And we do have like a free play where they can come in and play for hourly, where we can introduce them to the games if they've never played and show them. And then we can put them on a team where then they can be together with other kids that are like the same game and play the same.
Okay. So then do you focus on, is it 8 to 10 to 18, 19? Or is there no age limit?
7 to 17.
7 to 17, okay.
And we will, you know, we can offer for the fringes, too. So if someone was 20 years old and wants to play, we can let them play. Or younger, we offer younger games that are, you know, like a Minecraft, which is for younger kids and things like that. But it's kind of like akin to like a Taekwondo studio. So we do have memberships, but the hourly is to kind of introduce them to this world.
That, I'm sorry.
And we have different packages, but yeah, it's a whole thing.
And then I just have one question for Bradford. Where is this bay in comparison to the two indoor parks that are already in that shopping plaza? And the swim school? So we have two indoor playgrounds, a swim school in there already. Where is this in comparison to that?
I don't have a slide up or with me for that. Whereabouts is that bay?
Yeah, are you guys closer to Kmart? Or where Bell's or Burlington? Burlington.
If you look...
There's like a tire depot.
It's the end cap of...
Yeah, it's kind of like this in-front standalone, closer to the street.
Okay, so you're taking the other half of Burlington?
Uh, nowhere...
No.
There's like a Vicky Bakery, is there? Right next to Vicky Bakery.
Okay, gotcha.
Which is also new, right?
The, one of the out parcels?
Yeah, if you look up there, you can kind of see where my...
That's, okay.
In that one, no, here?
Yep.
Here?
And then, yeah, back in there is where the...
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
And is there enough parking there? Or do we anticipate, I mean, I know there's enough parking in the complex, but in that strip with what's there already? Do we anticipate just a lot of commuting?
Right.
Okay.
Within these shopping centers, it's all shared parking.
Right.
So if there isn't enough parking spaces there and they become as popular as they want to be, and there's lots and lots of people, they'll have to find parking spaces.
That's what I'm asking, because I know there's the restaurant, the tire shop, all on that out parcel side, the bakery that's there now. So, okay. Thank you.
One real quick question. Where did the name come from?
99 Lives, that's a great question. Thank you for asking. It was, back when we were kids and we started playing Nintendo, there was an old game called Contra.
Okay.
And it was a code that you put in, up, up, down, down, left, right. It's like, and it gave you 99 lives. And I told my wife about it one day, and she goes, "That's what we should call it." And I thought, "What a cool name."
That's a great name. And I'll tell you, one of the things about bringing the kids together physically, I mean, so many of, and I don't know much about gamers and game, but I do know that they tend to be isolated and that type of thing. And bringing them together is a powerful thing, so that's great.
Yeah, we also want to offer kind of a community outreach to introduce the parents, too, because there's also a big disconnect between how much parents know about this and how much the kids know. And when the parents start to find out the kids know more than them, they shut down and they don't ask. And then the kids kind of do this by themselves, and we kind of are going to try to bridge that gap.
Education level of the parents, up to speed.
I have a couple of questions, and I agree with every... Oh, this is a great idea, to bring our children together. Can you talk about security and safety? One, personal safety in kids making sure they're not playing games that are above their age and that sort of thing?
Well, we will meet with every kid, and everyone will develop their own profiles and stuff like that, what games they really like. We will only introduce them to games that are appropriate for them. We focus on like a soccer game called Rocket League, which is cars and soccer, so there's no violence in there. For anyone that's above 14 years and older, we will play games that are called Overwatch, which is a game that we've actually talked to the school districts, and they have, are very interested in these programs. And they have a list of games that they've approved. And so we stick to their approvals. And so, and then, and what age groups that they really are like. Because we want to also work with the school systems and develop these groups so that we can compete with them, sort of like a football game, you know, that they have the games, but we can play with them.
Yeah.
But everyone seems to be really interested in that.
That's great.
And we also have esports coaches that will monitor what the kids do. There will be absolutely no cussing, and will be strict rules, and the kids will be monitored by a few coaches that will maybe select age-appropriate games for the groups and make strategies together.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for mentioning the coaches as well. You know, sometimes we worry about the seven-year-old interacting with the 17-year-old and having that, those coaches there monitoring them. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions? If you have other questions or comments, members on council, all of them motion.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda number 2. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If no opposed, Diane, let the record show agenda item R2 was approved 5-0. Good luck, yeah.
Thanks so much.
Agenda item R3 is a public hearing to consider application number 23-158, an application by RP Logistics LLC adopting resolution number 23-48 confirming council's action. The applicant is seeking a special exception use approval to allow for manufacturing, limited processing, and assembly within the industrial limit zoning district in order to operate a 42,123 square foot industrial-scale butcher and meat processing establishment within the Aldi parking, Aldi Park Plan Industrial District and located at 1131, 1141, 1151, and 1161 North State Road 7. This is also a quasi judicial process, so we have to swear in individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you state your names for the record, please?
Mark Smiley.
Doug Bush.
James Marvel.
Thank you. Can you also raise your hands for me? And I'll swear y'all in. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to council for ex parte disclosures on this item.
And staff.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you again, Mayor. The applicant is seeking a special exception use approval to allow a manufacturing, limited processing, and assembly in order to operate a 42,143 square foot industrial-scale butcher and meat processing establishment on a property currently constructed and site planned for a 128,500 square foot office warehouse combination. The property is situated within the Aldi Park Plan Industrial District and located at 1131, 1141, 1151, and 1161 North State Road 7. This slide illustrates the existing site plan and the 42,143 square foot bay where RP Logistics will, this meat packaging place will occupy. In reviewing the special exception, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, and conformance with the village's development standards for the industrial limited zoning district. More specifically, whether the proposed special exception meets the approval criteria on these next few slides. And we've already gone through that approval criteria. And so I'll just skip through these. Let me know if you want me to stop on any of these slides and reread. Seeing no hands, I'll keep going. The project complies with almost all property, excuse me, development regulations, as well as other requirements of the Code of Zoning Ordinance. The requested use for manufacturing, limited processing, and assembly is allowed by special exception approval. The use is needed for food-grade facility. It's a little bit more detailed with this, how they will operate production and meat processing to include cutting, grinding, and aging, trimming facility, food production, dry storage, cold storage, warehousing, and wholesale manufacturing and distribution of the foregoing of fine foods, paper products, and other related items. And ancillary office administrative uses are related to the foregoing. The proposed tenant is a longtime company in Palm Beach County. Staff, in reviewing the proposed special exception use, considered, again, compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, and conformance with the village's development standards for the industrial limited zoning district. And staff has determined that the proposed special exception conforms to these standards. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application and recommended approval by a vote of 5 to 0 on January 23rd, 2024. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Does the applicant like to make any comments?
I'm the engineer of record, and just wanted to add here that, you know, Bush Brothers is the potential tenant here that is coming in. They're a 100-year company, great asset to Palm Beach County. Really welcome them to Village of Royal Palm. They know their business well. They run a clean operation. And I know that because McCraney Property Company, who owns the building, keeps their facilities top-notch. So I think this use, you know, everything's contained inside. You really will not see anything other than the beautiful building you see out there today.
It is a beautiful building.
It is.
But are they, so is this an expansion for them? Or are they moving from one location to here?
I'll let Doug Bush discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah, so no, this is a relocation. So we've been in the same building in North Dixie Highway in West Palm Beach since 1931. And we've been looking for a new home for a while, and...
Did you say 1931?
Yes.
Oh, okay, wow.
Yeah, yeah, we actually opened in 1925 across the street from our current location. Moved into this building in 1931, and now, hopefully, 2024, we're going to move into Royal Palm Beach. We're excited.
Okay, that's very interesting. Wow. Before we go to comments for members on council, Diane, we had any prior...
No, Mayor.
No?
If I remember correctly, I think it's the fifth generation?
Yes, sir.
Fifth or fourth?
Fifth. So my brother, my cousins and I are the fifth-generation family owners of the business.
Keep it, keep the legend going. Any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
No, okay. I have not received any public comment cards this evening on agenda item R3, but if anyone here would like to comment, I'll give them that opportunity. Seeing none, we're going to close public comment on agenda item R3 and open for questions for members on council. Selena, you were first.
Start. If you can, and Bradford kind of touched on it a little bit, but exactly what does manufacturing, limited processing, and assembly entail?
I mean, that's...
In the Cliff Note version?
That's your, that's your code description for the use, right?
What are you going to be doing behind closed doors?
Processing animals.
We are a wholesale meat-cutting facility. So we make steaks, roasts, chops, grinds for hotels, restaurants, country clubs, et cetera.
So it's all commercial sales, not residential?
All commercial sales, that's correct.
Okay, so you won't be...
No use, there's no store.
Okay.
Door and get a steak.
Damn it.
In our current facility either, but yeah. You can't, you can place orders, you know, through some of our home distributors that we sell to, but...
Okay, good to know.
From Omaha Steaks.
There you go.
So then... Some Royal Palm Steaks.
Royal Palm Steaks, there you go.
Right. So do you then receive the, lack of a better term, the... Does a truck pull up with carcasses in there, frozen? Do you then process them in there? Is there waste? Where does the waste go?
Great question. So we buy sub-primals, so we don't buy carcasses. We buy already, already portioned pieces of beef. And then we further process, fabricate. But there is, there is waste, right? So we have inedible waste, right? Inedible food waste that will be stored in coolers in the facility, picked up once, twice, three times a week, depending by companies that take that and make soaps and fat and whatever.
So you're not getting the rocky slabs of beef that are coming through there?
No, not in a long time. My grandfather did, but we don't anymore.
Okay. So your neighbors will, yeah, when they're hanging there. So your neighbors will not know what you're doing? It's not going to do and have an impact on, because there's residential just next to...
No, 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 they won't. I mean, it's, it's like any other manufacturing operation in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
They'll see our, they'll see our trucks coming in and out, right? So it's a distribution, it's, it's a manufacturing and distribution business, so...
Right.
The right use for the area, so...
Thank you.
Next.
Oh, mine was, mine was a very interesting question, but not very important. And that is, if you're here, we expect the hundred-year celebration next year, right?
Open in time, absolutely. We, we're eager to be in there by the hundred-year anniversary. We'll see.
So, so on a personal basis, my father, when he was a teenager, worked in a meatpacking factory. I would say that that probably is a good bit different from what actually happens today. I heard that you all have kind of modular units that, that you bring in. Is, is that right? Is that, is that part of the configuration? I mean, there's, or your build-out, is it?
So I think, I think the modular, maybe what you're talking about is just like the, the insulated walls are like pretty fabricated insulated cooler walls and floors that they will install inside the building.
Okay, so it's just, it's just a cooler kind of a...
Basically, it'll be one large freezer, one large cooler, and then a processing room, right? Which will be thirty-five degrees and it'll have our employees making fabrication.
Right. And I saw something in a post about you all coming here, which I thought was fantastic. I mean, you know, we're, we're privileged to have a company that is going on a hundred years old. That's, that's remarkable.
And we're excited because we think it's a, you know, it's closer to home for a lot of our employees. We have, we have employees that are Royal Palm residents and hopefully it'll be a good opportunity to draw some more employees.
That's definitely a bonus.
And that was one of the questions I was going to ask, because I do, I don't remember the number, but there was the idea that there were going to be some additional jobs available and that type of thing?
For sure. Yeah.
Is, is there a particular number and what type of jobs?
I mean, our, our sort of best guess is that we'll probably increase, you know, forty-five to fifty-five percent, right? So another twenty-five to thirty jobs. But, you know, that'll, that'll probably come on a shift cycling, right? Which we don't do now.
Okay.
So...
All right. And, and the type of work, I mean, what?
Anywhere between, I mean, we, we, we have a wider range of employees, right? There's drivers, there's warehouse employees who are preparing the orders, there's processing, you know, butchers and packaging folks and customer service people and...
Okay. All right. Great. Well, you bring a lot.
Yeah, I mean, look, we, we did a heat map of the county and said, where do our employees live? And a lot of them are out in this direction, and so it advised our, our decision.
Okay.
May I ask you how long your lease is for?
So it is a ten-year lease with three five-year extensions? So it'll, it'll go longer than that. I mean, we're not going anywhere. We've, we're putting a lot of money into the build-out of the building. We've been in our current one for ninety-three years. I don't, I don't think we're going anywhere.
Thank you.
As new meaning to stability.
I mean, there, there's not much more stable than we are.
Not, not much.
Any other questions? Do you know further questions or comments from members on council? I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that the agenda item R3 was approved five zero. Good luck, and we can't wait for you to open and start your operation.
We're, we're ready. We're, we're the next item too, so...
Yep.
Oh, we have more, okay.
Part of the variance.
Agenda item R4 is a public hearing to consider application number 23-156. An application by RP Logistics LLC to allow, oh, the parking variance from village code section 23-51 sub-two to allow for a hundred and fifty-nine parking spaces where village code requires two hundred and seventeen parking spaces. A variance of fifty-eight parking spaces for a property located at 1131, 1141, 1151, and 1161 North State Road 7. Everyone's been sworn in already? Do they need to be sworn in again?
No, they're okay if they're already sworn, but I'll just ask for ex parte from council on this item.
Village, village staff.
Bradford.
Sure. The applicant, as you stated, is requesting a parking variance for a hundred and fifty-nine parking spaces where village code requires two hundred and seventeen parking spaces, variance of fifty-eight parking spaces. Village code requires a minimum of one space per five hundred square feet of gross floor area plus one space per employee on maximum work shift. Be provided for the industrial and manufacturing use. The applicant intends to use this space for industrial scale butcher shop as we had previously discussed. Currently, the forty-two thousand one hundred and forty-three square foot space is parked for an office warehouse combination that requires one parking space for three hundred square feet of office and one parking space for one thousand square feet of warehouse space. Here is the approval criteria for variances. Special conditions and circumstances exist. Do not result from the actions of the applicant. Will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A little interpretation of the provisions of this division would deprive the applicant rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. The variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the property, will be in harmony with the general intent purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved. The applicant contends that granting this variance will not be injurious to the surrounding area or otherwise detrimental to public welfare. The code deficient parking will have no effect on the surrounding buildings, most of which are commercial in nature. There is sufficient parking provided for the tenant based on the historic needs as a local business. Permitting this grant variance will allow the applicant to meet the parking needs of long-term local business without impacting other businesses on-site. Village staff is not in support of this variance because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist. Will confer the, on the applicant, special privileges that are denied to other lands. However, it is important to note that the current parking ratio that has been applied to this bay, there is ample parking for the tenants, for this tenant, at maximum work shift, and that there would actually be a surplus of parking spaces. So the idea is that our code parks the warehouse area at a certain ratio with the idea that there's, that's going to be for the employees. But then it goes on to further state that you have to pack, park max work shift. So not only is it parking the employees of the warehouse with the idea that there's going to be employees in there, plus then addition to that max work shift. So there's almost a double parking in our code. This is one that we use very often, but it is going to be one that we evaluate through the strategic planning process. So that's something to think about. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, Bradford. Would you like to make any comments, applicant?
Good evening again. No, really Bradford kind of explained a lot of it. The only thing I would say is, you know, to the specific use, that's what drove the initial large number of parking. But in discussions and review of how their operation works, they just didn't need that number. We know it's not going to impact the other companies that are in the building. So we think, again, that the, that the variance will fit fine with the parking requirement.
Okay. Before we go to comments from members on council, Diane, any prior comments on agenda item R4?
No, Mayor.
Any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I have not received any comment cards for agenda item R4. If anyone here would like to comment, I'd give you that option. If not, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R4. Comments from members on council? You want to go first?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so my, my impression is of this is, as the applicant said, you know, we've got a situation where people aren't coming here. I mean, this isn't something where people are going to come and, and buy anything. And because of the designation, as Bradford explained, it seems like there's more than enough parking to me, even though the code requires X because of your special situation, you're not going to need the X. So it makes, it makes sense to me. I, I understand why the recommendation is denial. And that's what it should be by the code. But I think this is, yeah, something that falls in, in a certain spot where because of the situation and what's being done there warrants it. So those are my thoughts.
I have a question for staff. So from the diagram that you showed us, it looks like they're basically taking up a third of the warehouse that's currently built, correct?
Correct.
Do we know if the rest of the building is occupied?
It's not occupied now. I don't, they...
They're still building out.
They haven't done any interior build-outs.
Right.
Applications. So this is the first one that they're going to be applying for. So no, we don't know what the other occupants will be.
Okay, and I understand the...
The office warehouse.
Okay, so, well, and that's, my concern is not so much because I understand that per our code, that it is counting double spaces. But what is going to be in the other bays? And then how will that affect if there is limited parking? Or are you confident that what they're going to need with their, go ahead?
So those, those bays were site planned for office warehouse. So we anticipate office warehouse style uses going in. It is parked at the office warehouse. So if office warehouse goes in, there won't be any conflict with what is being provided and what they're consuming parking-wise. So that, that's, that's how we evaluate it. And that's how we move forward.
So how does that affect parking if it is not office warehouse that goes in there? Because we're...
That's, that, that would require a site plan modification in order to reclassify those portions of that building. And then that, it would be evaluated at that time.
Okay. And because you're on the end, I don't anticipate it being an issue. I just want to make sure that we don't run into a problem where next year we have another tenant that comes in here and says, okay, but now we don't have parking for...
It would, if we changed the office warehouse use, council would have to approve that.
In this, this portion, the, the use of this portion of that office warehouse, the, in its entirety, the building in its entirety, that special exception is what changed it. In this third portion, the remaining portion remains office warehouse.
That's what I thought originally, that the idea was, is that it was going to be all storage space or large base storage.
When you think about office warehouse, and this is the way that I think about it, office warehouse, there is going to be a distribution component to that. Boxes don't come in and never leave, right? They're not going to, you know, live there in perpetuity. So there is going to be a coming in and a going out. So there is going to be a distribution aspect to an office warehouse situation.
I'm good.
No questions? All right. Any further comments or questions from members on council? I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda item R4?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved five zero. Once again, good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Let's get it cranked up. Agenda item R5 is a public hearing to consider application number 23-137, and approval of ordinance number 1043 on first reading. An application by Urban Design Studio on behalf of Baptist Health South Florida, amending the village's zoning code to amend sections 26-22, 26-35.7, and 26-89 of the village code to add a definition for the term integrated care center. To allow for integrated care centers as special exception use within the general commercial dis, zoning district, and to provide for supplemental land use regulations for this use for a property located at 450 South State Road 7. This is a quasi judicial process, so we won't have to be sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your name for the record, sir?
Lency Jean-Louis.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the council for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
Village staff.
Stand.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I apologize in advance. I'm going to read this definition. Because I think that it's very, right, exactly. And it really describes the nature of this business and its scope of services, which is very important in differentiating between what has been before this council in the past with standalone emergency room. This is an integrated care center that has an emergency room component to this broad spectrum of services.
So you're saying there's a difference?
With, with what we're, what is being proposed tonight than what has been, been proposed in the past, right? So this is an integrated care center and will provide medical office uses and a hospital-based off-campus emergency department associated with a Florida licensed hospital that is physically separate and off-campus from the main hospital emergency department, but is under the same license of the associated hospital. The medical office uses within an integrated, integrated care center may include services such as physicians' offices, clinics, ambulatory surgery, outpatient services, diagnostic imaging, laboratory facilities, physical therapy, and offices for medical practitioners. The hospital-based off-campus emergency department element of the integrated care is intended to provide comprehensive emergency services consistent with the main hospital, including but not limited to diagnostic imaging, lab services, an onsite physician, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, a minimum of fifteen patient treatment bays, and onsite dispensing of prescription drugs, non-prescription drugs, or both for the duration of patient stay and upon patient discharge, but not after the patient is discharged. This slide illustrates a summary of the proposed text amendment. An integrated care center must be approved by Agency for Healthcare Administration. No overnight patient stays. To AHCA regulations, patient stays are limited to no more than twenty-three hours. The size, the minimum parcel size shall be two and one-half acres. Minimum building size shall be thirty-five thousand square feet, and no variance or waivers from these provisions are permitted. The setback, the building shall be setback, excuse me, a minimum of one hundred feet from a residential structure. Emergency fleet vehicles are not permitted to occupy required parking spaces. Orientation of emergency vehicle pickup and drop-off shall not face any abutting residentially zoned properties. An emergency vehicle siren shall be prohibited while on-site. And this section 2689 establishes this use as a special exception use. Planning agency considered this application on January 23rd, 2024, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. But they, they made a recommendation to make clear that this is not a twenty... Patient stays shall not be more than twenty-three hours and not a, for overnight stays. And staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Applicant like to make comments?
Thank you. And Bradford covered a good portion of it, but I'll just highlight some additional items. And again, we're here before you tonight to request the text amendment for the integrated care center use. We'll be amending the section 2622 definitions to define the use. We will allow the use in the GC or CG zoning district as a special exception use, and will provide supplemental regulations for that use. And really, this consists of two major components. The medical office component and the hospital-based off-campus emergency department component, which is derived from the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration regulations, and will be an off-campus extension of a parent hospital. And services rendered by the medical office component will include physicians' offices, clinics, ambulatory surgery, outpatient services, diagnostic imaging, laboratory facilities, physical therapy, and offices for medical practitioners. And the off-campus emergency department component services will include diagnostic imaging, laboratory services, an onsite physician twenty-four hours of the day, seven days of the week, and onsite dispensing of prescription drugs and non-prescription drugs for the duration of a patient's stay, but not after the patient is discharged. And currently, the medical uses allowed in the CG district are physicians' uses for which urgent care facilities, imaging centers, and testing facilities have been classified as that use, drugstores and surgeons. And the integrated care center use is a similar, consistent use with these medical uses in this district and will be allowed as a special exception use, which will require Planning Commission, a recommendation, and village council approval. And Bradford did go over the definition. Just to highlight some of the supplemental regulations that we are proposing, again, no waivers or variances will be permitted to the minimum size requirements of two-point-five acres and thirty-five thousand square feet for the building size. Will have no overnight patient stays. And as to additional miscellaneous requirements, no emergency fleet vehicles will be permitted to occupy required parking spaces. The orientation of emergency vehicle pickup and drop-off shall not face any abutting residentially zoned property. An emergency vehicle siren shall be prohibited while on-site. And as for submittal requirements, when we do get to the site plan stage, the typical information required for site plan review will be required, as well as a summary and a delineation of emergency vehicle traffic circulation on-site. And to summarize, the proposed use that will be allowed as a special exception use in the CG district, again, it will require P&amp;Z Commission recommendation and village council approval. It must comply with the supplemental regulations presented before you tonight, and also must show compliance with the code-required special exception standards. That concludes our presentation. We have representatives of Baptist Health if you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, before we go into questions, because I think we do have questions. Diane, any prior comments?
No, ma'am.
Public comments, no? Ray, any hands raised?
Mayor.
Okay. I've not received any public comment cards this evening on this agenda item, but if anyone would like to comment, I would give them that opportunity to now. How you doing, Ken? Having seen none, I'm going to close public comments to agenda item R5 and open it up for questions and comments from members on council. Who wants to go first? You've been going first, you want to go again?
And I don't know if you can answer this or if the applicant needs to, but what are some services? So I have several questions. So what are some services that would not be performed in the ER if a patient cannot stay overnight? So if you rush there, I'm assuming you have transportation to the ER. It's going to require some recovery.
And I do need to be sworn in. My name is Ken Tuma with Urban Design Studio.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead, thank you.
We also have representatives of Baptist Health who are much more informed than us than I am. But in general, let's say you had an issue with a heart, you had a heart issue and you weren't stabilized. You can't stay overnight. They would then be shuttled off to the closest, most appropriate hospital where their care would be taken care of. Or, for example, you came into this facility and you had a stroke. That's not something that's going to be handled at this facility. You would be taken offsite. But if I broke my arm, it's a perfect spot for this facility.
Okay, so then the ambulance is going to bring me to this site, treat things like that, but obviously then when I'm picked up, they'll decide whether I go to this auxiliary or somewhere else?
Correct.
And where is, does it need to be another Baptist Health hospital as far as transportation? So we have two hospitals that are there, they will transport?
Correct. Ms. Mormon is here, and I wanted to, yes, sir.
No, go ahead, finish, because I want to...
Okay.
Appropriate spot for the best care that they are. So depending on what it is, no, it does not necessarily mean that they're going to be transferred to Bethesda West. No, that is not...
Right, because that's a distance, so that's, yeah, okay.
So a patient who lives in Royal Palm Beach, who comes to this facility, is brought there.
And Fred, or Mayor, I'm sorry, it is hard to hear you, sir. I'm sorry. I don't know if the microphone's not...
Is that a little better?
Or maybe my ears aren't working one or the other.
You're right. It's the lady upstairs. That's why we didn't hear her, I guess. I know. So I just want to be clear. So you're saying that the patient could be transferred to Palms West or Wellington Regional?
Yes.
What determines that, whether or not you would take them to one of those hospitals?
I'm going to ask Ms. Mormon, who certainly had a little bit better, more information, or someone from the hospital, Vicki, come on up. She knows stuff colder than anybody.
But let me answer something before she answers the hospital question. The decision of where to take the patient is first determined by the ambulance picking them up. Fire rescue does have an MD on staff, and they do train their ambulance drivers based on, and they do evaluate the emergency rooms and what's best care, and that decision's made first there. So the goal is not to have people taken somewhere where they can't get the care they need. Doesn't mean, it may happen, and then they would step in with what they're going to explain to you now.
See, wait a minute, so...
You're absolutely right, that's the way normally...
Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Let me just swear in. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And just give the council your name, please. Thank you.
Are you, I see. So you're absolutely right. The emergency vehicles were determined where to take the patient, that it's appropriate care. However, a patient may walk in with the same condition of the patient that was in the ambulance. So we first decide based on the acuity of the patient, how sick they are. So are you having a stroke or heart attack? We have to take you out right away. Or you're choosing, you're okay, you're very stable, we take you to the hospital of your choosing as well. If you have a doctor, you've been taken care of.
You said you take them to the hospital of their choosing?
If they're stable, yes. And they say, if they're stable and they're okay, they say, I've been taken care by this hospital, and that's where I always go, absolutely. But that means that they're stable.
Do you keep statistics on that?
Yes, we do.
I'm just curious, because I think this is crucial to this whole concept. This is something that has come up, as you mentioned before, and I got overwhelming concerns from citizens that they didn't want to be, you know, booked into a hospital 15 miles away, right? So would you tell me that would not be the case, that they have some control over this?
We would always take it, if you're not in an emergency or dying, we would take you to the facility of your choice.
That's important.
Case, though, and fire rescue's here, so we might call you up to answer a couple of questions, but is that, though, you take them to the closest facility from where they're...
That could treat them.
You might need to come up, sorry, yeah. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I'm actually curious.
If you're curious, I'd definitely...
Are you calling 911 to have them transported somewhere?
We call 911 for a stroke or a STEMI. Right, those are emergency, we'll call you right back. And if you bring us a STEMI or a stroke, we don't let you go 30 minutes, we wait 30 minutes, and then you take the patient with you again once we diagnose with a STEMI or a stroke. The patient walked in, the fire rescue was not involved, so we know the patient's having a stroke.
Okay. I was just curious when you were saying we would transfer, or we...
No, we is when we call, we...
Or you're calling 911. So once fire rescue would arrive, it would be the closest appropriate facility depending on the patient's condition. If they are stable, as she's explaining, and the patient wanted to go to a further hospital, we would acquiesce and take them to the further hospital. But if they were having a stroke, Wellington is a comprehensive stroke center, so it would make sense to have the patient go to the closest comprehensive stroke center. So it would all be based on the patient's condition and vital signs and whether or not the patient was stable or not. But we always do, regardless of where we get a patient from, we always try to bring them to the hospital of their choice.
Excellent. That's important. Okay.
Wait, don't go too far. Take a photo, see, not done, just in case.
So...
The other question I had, which, and I believe, Mr. Tuma, you can answer this one. Is this similar, because I know the location that it is, it's the old Toys R Us location, so it is kind of in a strip mall area. Is this going to be similar to the Wellington auxiliary facility that they have out in Westlake? Without, but this one will have the doctor's offices.
General concept, yes, except this will also, that doesn't have the medical component adjacent to...
Right, so this one has the doctor's offices.
Office and medical adjacent, attached within the same building.
But then the care that you would receive or the capability of this auxiliary location is comparable to...
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Who's next?
I'll just ask this one. Similar to comparing, how does this facility compare to the urgent care on Forest Hill that is Bethesda's?
I will try my best, and then I'm going to have Vicki come back and get me out of trouble. But the differential is, obviously, this has a doctor there 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. That's a differential where urgent care closes at 11:00 PM, and there's not necessarily a doctor, there could be a PA there. In this case, there is a doctor there, an emergency-trained, licensed physician in emergency training there all day, every day, Christmas, Easter, Hanukkah, whatever it may be, you can go there.
Thank you.
So with regard to the difference between urgent care and an integrated care facility like this, which has a component that is an actual emergency room, unfortunately, I spent the last four weeks bouncing back and forth between urgent care. When I finally got to the emergency room, the treatment was totally different. And it was more comprehensive, it was more thorough, it was more on an emergency basis, and they resolved it. So I can see the tremendous difference just through my own personal experience here. And then the other thing is capacity. We're growing, and some of us plan to be around for a while. And so unfortunately, what goes along with that is we spend more time in places like urgent care and emergency rooms. And so what I'm seeing here looks like something that would be advantageous to us and to our population, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor, I'm sorry to hear you had the opportunity to use the facilities recently. That's not very good, unfortunately. But what you'll see is that 24-hour difference is a big game changer. I have, you know, I don't live in the village, I live in another city north of here, and when my son broke his arm about a month ago, guess where we took him in the middle of the night, to someplace at Jupiter Medical Center. But it worked out very well. Thank you.
I guess my question is, are there, and I don't know if this would be Ken or a hospital question, because we are kind of in a little bit of a unique situation where we have, it's got to be definitely both of them within five miles of this new facility, which, in my opinion, you know, COVID's taught us one thing, I think we need more hospital capacity, not less. Are there any one of these type of facilities that close to not only one, but two? Because I thought maybe Palm Beach Gardens or Jupiter area, they built a standalone up there that wasn't too far from one of the hospitals they have up there.
I can certainly address that in regards to spatial relationship, and particularly in the city of Palm Beach Gardens, there are several. JFK has a facility on PGA Boulevard.
That's the one I'm thinking of.
Very close by to both Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center and also Jupiter Medical Center. I suspect probably both are within probably five miles of Jupiter Medical and maybe two miles to Palm Beach Gardens Medical. Jupiter Medical also has a facility on PGA Boulevard, and there's several other facilities. So this type, healthcare is changing.
This isn't a completely unique thing, this isn't the only one out there that would exist, where you've got two different hospitals and one of these, you know...
In fact, Baptist is, this is a tested program for Baptist. I believe this is number eight now, am I getting the numbers right?
In development.
In development, okay, eight. So it's not their first show with this. Also, I didn't mention, we do have a site plan that's going to be submitted soon, and that is going to have a number of beds associated with it. There are probably going to be 20, I believe it's 20 beds what we're coming in with. So that's just a unique opportunity to have lots of extra care within the village and for people to come in and use the facility 24 hours a day.
And another question, I guess I'll try putting Bradford on the spot, don't know that he'll have an answer. But with the requirements we have, the 35,000 square feet and all those things, are, how many other places are you, if you're aware of any other sites in the village that would accommodate something similar? Because if another medical group wanted to come in and do the same thing, are there any, you know, because I know from the history that that Toys R Us site is, you know, primed for this, but where else? I could think of a couple other redevelopment, maybe...
Right, well, and, you know, you could also envision, like, if some of these big box retail spaces may become vacant, just like this one did, then it may lend itself to this, this use.
Okay, thank you.
But based on the 35,000, we do think it'll be limited to State Road 7, State Road 80.
Yeah, the major, yeah. I can't think of any other buildings that are that big, but...
The reason for that 35,000 square feet requirement is to, so that we are getting that integrated care facility, where it's not just that small emergency room, we're getting a much broader spectrum of the medical care for our residents at this facility. They're not going to leave, they're not going to have a 5,000 square foot emergency room and then leave 30,000 square feet vacant. They're going to fill that with physicians.
I would hope not. But I have a question. So you're going to have physicians there where people would come in to see their doctor and get treated on a normal basis? Do those physicians have to be registered and working out of a particular hospital, or does it matter?
I'm going to address to Vicki. I suspect the answer's no, but I'm going to just double check.
Come on up, Vicki.
The question is, do the doctors in the MOB have to be associated with Baptist? I think that's a question, Mayor.
Right.
They have to be credentialed.
You have to, and the microphone, yeah.
In the...
No, in the office, no.
The office is...
No.
So they could somewhat be somewhat independent. So potentially, we could have residents who have current physicians who decide, hey, you know, we're going to start operating out of this location. It doesn't change anything else, and they still get to keep the same physician they've been working with.
That's correct.
Really? So you can make this work, huh?
Yes, we do this all the time.
I must say, this has got some different attributes and components that I didn't realize, but I'm glad to hear. As I said, the hot issue for me in terms of feedback I had gotten previously from citizens is they don't want to be arbitrarily shipped 15 miles away from home, so to speak. So it sounds like that's not going to be an issue here.
No, for us, the most important thing is a patient experience and that they go to the place they want to go to. So that would be their choice. Unless, again, if they're dying on us, we're going to make that decision.
Then it's all hands on deck, let's save their lives. And that's the same situation that the IEMs folks are in, you know, when every situation has its own unique situation that they have to make very quick decisions on what to do to save lives, which they do a good job at.
Time is, the needle's time.
I have one more question. I'm not sure if it's for the applicant or for Bradford, so kind of piggybacking on Councilman Valentes's question with that. So now we have on State Road 7, and I know you've done a lot of research and chosen this location, because I know it's been talked about for several years. But the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond that's vacant now, if they don't turn it into an indoor pickleball court, could somebody theoretically come in and do that? Or is it not going to make sense because now it's another medical facility so close to...
Well, so I can only speak to what our regulations are. And if it meets our regulations and the special exception is approved and certain site plan modifications are approved, then yes, they can conceivably go into that bay. Right. I'm sure the, you know, me speaking outside of my expertise, they're going to do a market analysis. And, you know, I mean, this may, this facility, doctors may see a lot of synergy opportunity with the emergency room. This could be a great success. And if it is, and we get another facility of this nature where somebody can go, and this is where they go, in an emergency, to get, and then also to get their care taken, your normal care in one place all the time, this, you know, this could be a great thing for, a great asset for the village of Royal Palm Beach.
Any other questions? If there are no further questions from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a regular agenda item number five.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that the agenda item R5 was approved 5-0 on the first reading. We have any idea when the second reading will be scheduled, Ray?
Date of the second reading?
Next month.
It'll be the next month?
It's next month, yes.
Okay, thank you all. I don't have any other items on our agenda. Is there no further business before the council this evening? I thank you all. We stand adjourned.
Excellent.